Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Hello and welcome to our candidates forum from the upcoming elections for the town of Shasbury. We're glad to have you with us today to hear from three candidates who are running for two positions on the town select board. I'm Andrew McKeever and it's my pleasure to serve as the moderator for today's forum. And I want to emphasize that our discussion today is a forum and not a formal debate. We won't be having rebuttal times or some of the back and forth you would normally expect to see in a debate. But what we will be doing is hearing from each of the three candidates and have them tell us a little bit about why they're running. And then have some time for some questions and answers after that. Each candidate will have about five minutes or so to make an opening statement. And then at the end, we'll set aside one minute or so for each of them to make a closing statement. Before we go any further though, I just want to say thanks to Cat TV for hosting and televising this program. And also to Jim Cormier, a Shasbury resident for organizing the forum. I really appreciate that very much. So without any further ado, let's meet our three candidates. Art Whitman is running unopposed for a one, two-year term on the select board. He is also the current chairman of the select board. Ken Harrington is also presently serving on the select board and is running for reelection for one of the two-year, excuse me, three-year terms. Martha Cornwell is also running for election to the board for the three-year term on the board that's currently held by Mr. Harrington. And this is her first try for public office. Okay, well, at this point, it is my pleasure to turn the microphone over to the three candidates and have each of them tell you a little bit about themselves and why they're running. And I thought we could go in alphabetical order by first name. So we will start then with Art Whitman, and then go to Ken Harrington, and then to Martha Cornwell. So Mr. Whitman, over to you. Get us started.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. I'm Art Whitman. I was born and raised in Shasbury. Spent all my summers and weekends on a family farm that... So I've, after graduating from high school and then college, I served in the army for a while and then came back to the family business, which was the feed store in North Bennington. So because of my experience with the farm and everything else, I have a deep appreciation for agriculture and farming community. I sold the business in 2015, I'm sorry, yes, 2015. In 2014, there were a couple openings on the select board. And because there was only one other person that was a Shasbury native on the board, I decided that really somebody should represent the Shasbury from the agricultural point, from the farming point and that sort of stuff. So that is what I did. Since then, the board has been very successful in gaining voter approval for a garage, which has been built without, in fact, without raising taxes because the previous select board was very forthcoming, forward-thinking and setting aside money from the very start. So we had quite a bit of money saved up. And what we were putting aside each year was just what the payments are now. We have done a lot of work at Coal Hall. If you haven't been there in the last four years or so, you should stop in. It's absolutely amazing what's been done. The road crew is really a working team. They have come together and are doing a great job on the road. Or in fact, our road foreman actually went to school to study engineering of roads and so on and so forth. So we're very, quite comfortable there. The financial state of the town is excellent. We only owe for the garage and a couple small pieces of machinery. And we have sinking funds set aside for every major piece of machinery throughout its lifetime so that we don't have to borrow money when they have to be replaced. That kind of brings up the question of what do we do with the ARPA funds? Which Shasbury is entitled to almost a million dollars. It's really up to the people. We are going to get a lot of suggestions and a lot of input from the public on this. Some possibilities are some major roads and culverts, or some major bridges and culverts in Shasbury. Coal Hall really needs more upgrading. It is not really handicapped accessible on the second floor where all the meetings are held. There is an old man lift there that is not reliable. It just needs a lot of work. And the other thing that is, might be a possibility is that the water line in Shasbury, what's called the Fire and Light District that services Cleveland Avenue and 7A, we have to replace it within the next probably 10 years or so. So we've already engineered the first phase of it. So that some of the money could go to help that. But that obviously is only benefiting a few people in town. So I, the, my, right now, the town of Shasbury is in court, in litigation court, with the town of North Bennington over water rights. So I can't get into that, but that's top, that's top on my priority. Also, I think we've got to come up with a better policy that is more equitable for what is known as community, the, I can't think of, community appropriations. This is where different organizations ask the town to give them money. We have no good policy right now that whether people can just ask for any amount of money or increase it or come on board without any petitions or anything. So that is one of our top priorities. And I think the voters are going to be asked to, in this coming election, to do away with the listers as a appointed position. We already are using a professional appraisal system. So we need to have somebody that is working with that profession, professional, and is also responsible for people coming in and asking what their appraisals are and that sort of stuff. So that's what I have at the moment.
All right. Well, thank you very much, sir. Really appreciate that. So let's move over to Ken Harrington. Ken, what makes you want to return to the select board?
Well, when I first got on the board, the reason I got on the board was they had the Newtown garage proposed. And the proposal they had was very extreme. And I worked construction my whole, I started working construction with my dad when I was 12 years old. And I've lived in the Shasbury my entire life. My mom and dad is Leo and Mabel Harrington. I started being in the army. When I got back, I went to work for the town. I was a town highway ferman for four years. I worked on all kinds of construction from, worked on a subway tunnel for the union for 20 years in Buffalo, New York. I worked on the Maricay Duke Department. Had my own construction business for 35 years. I got on the board mainly because of the, I thought was an outrageous plan for the Newtown garage. And one of the first things I did when I got on the board was I got on the building committee for the Newtown garage. And we got it trimmed down to what it is today, and which is more than adequate. It was doing a great job for the town crew and takes care of equipment. Also, when I got on the board, the town had over a million dollars in equipment out leases. And leases and loans. As Art said, we've got everything now for the next 20 years that we're going to buy. We've got a sinking fund for it. And I helped set up with the road foreman some of the plans that we've used for, for what they call French drains, to drain the roads. Both have the conditions, they don't have monthlies in every year. That's part of the advantage of being in construction as long as I have and working on the roads as foreman myself. And one of my plans is to, I like keep everything the way it is so we don't have any more big loans and keep the taxes down. And also, I'd like to see more Baghdad in the town to try to get more business in here. And I'd like to see something more done with Stanley Tools. Right now, it's just very basic. I'd like to see it like they did in North, I think it was Kemfab if I'm right. They turned that into apartments and small business units. And I think we could do that with Stanley Tools, help keep the taxes down in town.
Well, okay, great. Well, thank you very much, sir. So was that everything? Did you, okay.
That was our particular, is that it?
All right. Well, all right, terrific. Martha Cornwell, over to you then. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running.
Great. Thanks so much, Andrew. I really appreciate it. My name is Martha Cornwell and I'm also a Shasbury native. I spent my early years attending Shasbury Elementary School, participating in North Shaft soccer, doing fun runs at Howard Park and performing in musical programs all throughout the county. This community has been so supportive of all of my efforts over the years. Folks in our community helped send me money for my medical textbooks and sent really encouraging words over the years when I was in college. I went away to study medicine at the University of New England and became a physician assistant. And I knew from the moment that I started my medical journey 10 years ago that I was going to come back to this community and serve. I now work as a PA at the memory clinic here in Bennington, Vermont. I'm working to advance our understanding of Alzheimer's disease and hopefully help to find a cure for the disease. You may have also seen me working at the middle school and high school as a sub. I've been a sub for 17 years. Or you may have seen me at the farm stand at Clearbrook Farm in the summers where I've worked for many years. During the pandemic, you may have seen me, I may have given you a COVID vaccination while I've been volunteering with the Vermont Medical Corps. And I currently serve as the vice chair of the planning commission here in the town. I've spent my lifetime living, working, volunteering here in Bennington County. And Shasbury is so full of potential. We have so many small businesses and farms in our town. But there's an increasing gap in wealth here in our town. Many young people are struggling here to find high-quality jobs that have living wages. And our people, especially our young people, are being left behind in an increasingly online world with our slow internet or no internet in many places in our town. We need to be retooling our workers for the jobs of tomorrow. And this requires us to have broadband access for everyone. And innovative classes, like the one I'm taking right now at Community College of Vermont called 802 Startup, to help get entrepreneurs here in our towns. The days of working at places and companies like Stanley Tool are over. But I believe that with our ability to pivot, we can create good jobs. And it starts with having internet. Many of our people in our community are struggling to find affordable housing. The Shires Housing Project was an incredible collaborative effort between a lot of organizations and really has been a great benefit to our community. Being able to think creatively and harness the power of state grants and other organizations, we can help create more housing for our workforce that we need. My work on the planning commission has been aimed at revising bylaws to help create opportunities for different types of housing, similar to what Ken had said, as well as getting accessory dwelling units in other people's homes and outbuildings of old farms. And I believe that we can bring back a vibrant downtown. I look to our neighbors to the north in Arlington and their development of the newly created Arlington Commons. And it was completed with community support paid for with grants, loans, and as well as a lot of private donations and support. They now have a place where they can have exercise classes, cultural programs, art exhibits, and places for kids to go after school for after-school programs. And Shasbury has that opportunity too. But we need to rebuild our infrastructure. We have a once-in-a-lifetime effort here in our ability to use ARPA funds and federal money to help fix these problems. We could once again have a community country store and a restaurant and so much more. Shasbury has become really diverse and more diverse over time as we've had new members come in from our neighborhoods into our neighborhoods, as well as Vermont looking really good as climate change changes our environments and where we live. And we need to have more representative voices helping to bring us new ideas to our town government. Representation really matters. When we have women, people of color, people of the LGBTQ community, working parents, young people on our boards, we're creating visibility of unseen issues. And those effects create improvements that benefit all of us in all areas of our lives. I'm working to build a broad coalition of voters across age, demographic interests, even how long they have lived here, and to try to get to them with new forms of communication. I want to open up communication and meet people where they are, whether that's on their front porch, by phone, in print media or social media. I believe our board is stronger when the public is involved with shared decision-making. So I'm looking forward to hearing people's thoughts from the community. I'd love to hear from you. Please reach out. There's a lot of ways to do it on my Facebook page or phone or website. And thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak today.
All right. Well, thank you, Martha. And thanks to all three of you. And before I go any further and forget to mention this, I just wanted to say thank you to all three of you for running and stepping forward to serve your community. Really important, perhaps more important than ever right now. And it's just great to see that kind of civic involvement in our local communities. Okay, well, now that we've heard from each of our three candidates, so let's go to a couple of questions perhaps. And like I was saying earlier before we went on the air, if we want to kind of have this evolve into a conversation more than, you know, a back and forth between me and each one of you individually, that would be great, I think. One question I thought I'd throw your way is, how do you view the current balance between economic development and environmental protection in Shasbury? Do you think the town needs more development or more protection? Or is the current balance pretty much about right as it is? And perhaps, Mr. Whitman, I'll go to you first and see if you can give us your thoughts on that subject. And then we'll just let everybody else chime in as they wish, and we'll go from there.
I think economic development in Shasbury is critical, but it also is, it's got a tough road ahead because of, we just don't have a good, we don't have a septic system in downtown. And so until we, and the cost of that is extremely prohibitive for just the small area that it would take care of. You've got all of, a lot of other people in Shasbury that would not benefit that much from it. Although if we had a restaurant or a car wash or something like that, that definitely would help the entire town. I think there are enough regulations or there is enough awareness of the environment. So I don't think the environmental controls are holding us back as far as economic development. I don't feel that that is a problem.
Martha?
If I could go next, I don't see them as one or the other. I kind of see them as working in tandem, especially as we continue to have climate change. And certainly our winters have been so much less predictable than they have in the past. We can create green jobs and other ideas that also benefit and give folks good jobs. And certainly, you know, in our town, we've had several solar projects that have been built and are in the process of working their way through Development Review Board, which are great jobs and jobs of the future. And so I think that we are working on striking a good balance between both of those efforts.
Ken, did you reach way in on this one?
Yeah, I think the best aspect for creating more jobs and more industry in town is like I said, down to Stanley Tools. That building is, I don't think they're using 5% of the entire building on there. And the potential for that, to me, is really great. And you've got the area down there that you can handle anything, any environmental problem. And it's a really good structure. And like I say, if they did what they did in North, I think it'd be a really great benefit to the town. As Art said, you've got a restriction here because you don't have a town sewer. But the only one that would really benefit would be the village. And it would be prohibitively costly. And the rest of the people in town is not going to pay to support it. So that's the main draw back there. But, and then possibly you could encourage Peckham, get some more business up that way. Those are the two big areas for the town where you can really get some benefit. To get a lot more good paying jobs in town.
All right. I wanted to return to a point that I think all of you mentioned and one point in each of your presentations. And that's the question about the ARPA money, American Rescue, American Recovery Plan Act. I guess I just wondered, you folks in Shasbury are getting close to a million dollars to, you know, spend on one investment or another. And I guess I'd like to invite you all to elaborate a little bit more on kind of what you saw as the priorities there. I know water projects and broadband are among the, the green-lighted areas that that money could be spent on, although there are also a couple of others. And I know the rules are kind of evolving as we've gone along. But I just was curious if you had an idea in mind as to how much of that million dollars ought to be divided between one thing or another?
And I think, yeah, yes, you're right, it's roughly a million dollars. And the rules are changing constantly. When they first came out, it was extremely restrictive. And at that time, we thought maybe the only thing we could do was put almost all the money into the water system. But from what we've seen lately as far as rulemaking, we probably could spend some on Coal Hall and we might be able to spend some on the roads. Again, as I said before, this is the people's money and we want to hear from them. But I think three areas that we would be allowed to spend it as far as the rule is right now is some money into the roads, updating Coal Hall. It is the command center for, it is the emergency command center. So we really need to have it, have a generator there and a few other things that are not there at this time, plus access to the second floor. And then again, the water line, which is going to be a huge thing, huge project over the next 10 years.
Anyone else have any ideas on that?
Yeah, I'd like to go if that's all right. So I also, I think we all kind of agree, infrastructure and broadband are a big effort that is something that a lot of community members have talked about. I see the ARPA funds as kind of a stepping off tool. And yes, these are huge sums of money, but I think that they can be leveraged with other grants. I've been doing a lot of research on different types of septic systems and sewer lines because that's kind of preventing us from having a really vibrant downtown at the moment. And there are a lot of new solutions and new technology that's out there. And many towns in Vermont have used this new technology to overcome some of the situations that we're having here in our downtown. So I see it as using some of the money for some of these big, broad categories, but then also being really proactive and thinking about other sources of income as well to kind of tackle some of these really large issues. And it really is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to make some really amazing big changes in our town. It's really exciting.
Okay, one article I saw on your town warning kind of caught my eye as I was preparing for this. I see that one of the articles on the warning asks voters if they're in favor of replacing the office of the town lister with a professionally trained assessor. I'm assuming the lister that you currently have, is that an elected position?
There are actually, there are actually three listers. Every year we vote for to replace, I think they come up for a three-year term. Every year we replace one. Years ago, the lister's position used to be extremely important because they were the ones that would set people, the assessed value of a person's home, which then would mean how much their taxes were. The state many years ago told us we had to have a professional appraiser do this as opposed to the good old boy that was elected by the people. So right now, the three listers really are only there in the office for a few hours, two or three days a week, just to take complaints and to show people what their values are listed at and so on and so forth. The actual work is done by a professional appraiser. We have a contract with a company that provides us with an array of people that are available to us. Whenever there is a house that has to be appraised, it's done professionally. They do the, all that sort of stuff. And so really what we are asking the town people to do is allow us to hire a person that is always in the office, that is working with the professional appraisers. And all they are doing is data entering into the computer and so on and so forth. That person would be there almost every day during the hours that the Coal Hall is open. And they, and we would just do away with the election every year of a public lister.
And is that because it's just too hard to find people to step forward to take the lister position? Or is it a question of the fact that the job has become more complicated and you really do need somebody who's got a professional background in accounting and listing, property evaluation to manage that position?
Because we hire a professional appraiser, you do not have to be proficient in the appraisal part of it. What you have to be proficient in is data entering and all of that sort of stuff. The other thing is, this is kind of unique. If you are elected by the people, you only answer to the people. The select board or the town clerk or anybody else cannot tell you what to do or what not to do. Whereas this way, if we do away with the elected portion of it and the selectman hires somebody, then we can, we have at least some authority over what they do and so on and so forth. But because, just like the treasurer and the town clerk, they are elected by the people and the selectman really cannot tell them what to do.
Ken, Martha, either of you want to weigh in on this one or have we kind of?
I don't think I could say any better than that.
Well, I know it's, you're not the only town that has struggled with that and has... Well, I know it's, you're not the only town that has, uh, struggled with that and has, uh, gone to a professional, uh, uh, assessor and as opposed to an elected lister. I know it's, it's happened in a lot of, a lot of places, uh, interesting, uh, development. Um, you know, I guess before we go, I just wanted to ask each of you, and I know you've all touched upon this in some way already, but, uh, it's been such a big issue statewide that I thought I'd, uh, see, uh, what your thoughts were on it, uh, on the local level in, in your town. Uh, housing, housing supply is really, as we keep on hearing all the time, is in very short supply, uh, you know, folks, uh, who've lived here all their lives struggle to be able to buy a home, uh, or rent an apartment. I mean, I'm not sure if the select board is in a position to kind of do much about that or, or kind of, uh, make something happen to ease that, uh, situation. But I guess I just wondered if, uh, in the course of some of your conversations along the way, you come up with some ideas about gee, what, what could we do to, you know, improve particularly affordable or, uh, or I guess workforce housing as it's called, uh, for folks who, uh, maybe want to buy a home for the first time. And just are struggling in the current real estate market to come up with, uh, a down payment or be able to meet the mortgage payments. Any, any thoughts or discussions you've had about that?
Yeah, I, I'll go first. Um, so, because I suspect that I'm probably the only person here, um, that doesn't own a home. And I have not been able to purchase a home despite kind of making my life here and, and working here and, and working a very good paying job in, in medicine. Um, and so I've been reading and talking to a lot of folks about kind of alternative types of housing, how we can kind of creatively think about housing, um. There, uh, in the course of Shasbury, a lot of old farms with a lot of outbuildings and things like that. I have had several friends, um, who are younger folks who weren't able to, um, afford a house in our housing market at the moment, uh, work to create housing within these structures. So kind of accessory dwelling units for, for kind of the professional term for it. And I think that that is one direction that we can certainly work to go. Um, there's also a lot of movements, especially for the folks that are housing insecure or, um, unhoused at this moment, which Vermont has really struggled with and through the pandemic has brought people, um, to hotels and other places. Um, of, of creating kind of tiny house communities and having really energy efficient places that are safe and kind of built around a community structure with supports and things like that. Um, often the folks that are, um, unhoused or housing insecure have a lot of other issues that kind of need to be built around services, um, to help kind of keep them in those housing situations. So, um, I think some of those ideas are things that, um, Governor Scott's, uh, talked about. Um, and I think that there are things that could potentially be done in communities all over Vermont, including ours, if we kind of are working on changing some of our, our bylaws, which I, I work on as a planning commission member here for the town.
Gentlemen, any, many thoughts on that, that one?
I think, uh, go ahead. Uh, I, I, I don't think the select board itself can micromanage uh, this tough question, but what we do is we challenge the planning commission. We, we say to them, these are some of their problems. And that's what they do. They, they work on this very hard. Chris Williams, um, we have talks with him and saying, he kind of says, what do you think is the next problem we should be working on? And I'll, it's always housing and that sort of stuff. So I think just by, uh, by challenging Chris and, and the, the planning board, um, but for the select board to, um, not micromanage it, it's just not something that we should be doing, in my opinion.
Okay. Ken, you wanted to weigh in?
Well, we worked with the Shires, uh, they worked through, we had a federal loan. They worked through Shires, through the town flight board to get that loan for the, uh, building of the Shires buildings down there. And, uh, that, I think it's the way to go. Like, uh, that's a little bit, yeah, what flight ward should be doing. And we work with the planning commission out of that and figured out that way. That way we can work at a broader field than just doing it individually.
All right. Well, um, I think we're at the point where maybe we want to sort of bring our forum to a close here and, uh, wrap things up, uh. So I'd like to invite each of you to make a closing statement for a minute or so. And maybe we'll go in reverse order this time. Since, uh, we started off with, uh, Art, uh, maybe Martha will look to you to get us, uh, going on the, on the closing statements and then go to, uh, uh, Ken Harrington and then, uh, wrap it up with, uh, Art Whitman.
Sure. Thank you. So, um, we need more citizens to volunteer for roles in our town government and to be represented in our places of leadership. By working to create the Shasbury of the future with broadband internet for everyone, new infrastructure, a vibrant downtown, affordable housing and well-paying jobs, our community will flourish. Um, I'd be proud to continue to serve the community that I love so much and have grown up in and has supported me. Um, when we lean in together, we're not only going to survive, we'll thrive.
All right. Thank you, Martha. Okay. Ken, over to you.
Yeah. Well, I'd like just, uh, uh, point out the experience that I've got in construction and being on the board. I feel that I've got a lot of experience with the town. And we've got millions of dollars of equipment and loads to maintain. And I've got experience in all of it. And I've done it my entire life. And I'd like to continue doing it. Uh, I've been on the board for nine years and I'd like to get to the three years.
Okay. Mr. Whitman? You're on mute.
Thank you.
Oh, there you go.
There, okay. Uh, my only comment is, is that, uh, I just want everybody to be aware that there is no town meeting, in-person town meeting this year that, uh, you can either ask for a, uh, mail-in ballot. Everything is going to be Australian ballot. Or you can come to the, uh, new garage on North Road, uh, and pick up a ballot and fill it out at that time. But there will be no floor meeting, uh, as we've done, as Vermont is known for. Uh, we are just concerned about COVID and hopefully this will be the last year we'll have to cancel it. But just let everybody know, if you don't want to come to the fire, to the town garage, you can ask for a mail-in ballot or you can pick a ballot and fill it out at the town garage and, uh, town meeting day. Okay?
All right. Well, you anticipated what I was just about to say to close things up here. But I guess, uh, folks should know that they can go to your town website and you can find the Zoom link there for the meeting on, uh, Sunday, February 27th, I believe.
That's right.
Like, uh, it's posted there, uh, so you can go and click on that and, uh, uh, take part in the meeting. Well, I wanted to thank all three of you again for stepping forward to run for public office, uh, Art Whitman, Ken Harrington, Martha Cornwell, uh, good luck. Congratulations, uh, and also thanks to Cat TV and, uh, and to, uh, well, all your voters out there. Um, your town meeting will be held, uh, as I said, uh, well, the information meeting is February 27th, voting on March 1st, but you can of course vote early. And they're on the town website, shasburyvt.gov. You can find all that information there. So, thank you all again.
Thank you.
And, uh, great to have spent some time with you today.
Yeah.
Good luck to everybody.